Hello everybody and welcome to another Just Enough Hesey Show. And I just want you to know, everybody, that uh, I want you to know that I'm, oh, I can't hear myself because I didn't use the microphone. Anyways, welcome to the show. Um, I finally played the music for the Instagram people because I had it on another little recording because the big one didn't come through. I'm very excited about this week. I'm very excited what's coming up in the next couple of weeks. You know, uh, the, uh, the election already ended a month ago, really a month ago. And only now did the final race in Congress decide. And, and the House of Representatives now is 220 for Republicans, 215 for the Democrats. Finally, we know we have the power. Finally, we know that there's going to be a change. Finally, we know the Senate is in place and President is doing everything for Mar-a-Lago. He's already on the world stage and he's not even there. People are already calling him and, and he's already getting things rocking and rolling. And, and they're going after him already. Yeah, we're gonna talk about the pardon for Hunter Biden. We're gonna talk about Fannie Willis, how she should already drop it and how she's herself done crooked things. We're gonna talk about so many different things, even the local election, the local uh, 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 trial of, of uh, Mr. Uh, 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 Mr. Penny, who, who, who should have been already decided, should have been simple, not guilty. And, and it's just, I don't even know what they're thinking about, what they're deliberating over there. I mean, and, and then they tell us New York City, the crime is down, rapes are up, petty crime is up. Shooting, there was a shooting in Midtown Manhattan by a big CEO in broad daylight, in Midtown Manhattan. We're all the cops, you know, I'm driving my car tonight. By the way, hello Natasha, you're the best. Uh, uh, Infinity Justice, I want to welcome you. And I want to introduce and welcome all my YouTube and, and Facebook and Instagram fans and soon we'll, uh, welcome everybody from the radio. Uh, if I can even find the ads. But um, you know, it's not only New York City that I, I'm going to be discussing. And yes, today's show, I will discuss my election, what happened this week. How my competitor joined the race, what he did to me in the race, how he called me, how he even tried to do something illegal. You know what I mean? Uh, to, to convince me to drop out of the race. This is what uh, uh, America has come to that we're able to bully. You know, like I was telling the people, I was driving to the hospital, somebody that, that had to go visit somebody sick today. And a lady was standing on the corner, she made a right turn on a red light. It really wasn't red, it was almost red and the cop was there and right away he pulled her over. And he did it right in front of me, like cut me off with his red light. And he blocked the street for like five minutes and I finally, I'm starting to cut aside of him and I said, what are you doing? Oh, don't you see I'm stopping a traffic stop? I said, but you don't stop the whole city. You don't stop a main thorough street to, I can't pass you. He says, well, you have to wait. I said, who gave you this much power to wait for what? What stupidity? You're busy handcuffing 12-year-old girls to their, in school. You're busy bullying around, but you're not busy taking care of the migrants and the gang members that, that are killing, raping, shooting in the middle of the streets. You're not busy willing to take care of these Palestinian protesters that are screaming death to America and, and causing damage to our, our, our monuments. This is what you're not busy with. You're busy with stupid traffic stops screaming, just like the masks. Do what you did to us during the mask mandates and you enforce stupid laws. You're supposed to be protecting us from crime. I'll tell you about El Salvador, how they went after the gang members. We need a change and my quote today is gonna tell you what changes. And I'm gonna tell you about Trump, who really Trump is. Tonight, I'm going to explain to you who Trump is. And you're gonna finally understand what I'm talking about. And I want all my fans and now we're going to welcome all of our listeners on, uh, where are they from? With WSNR Radio, Channel 620 AM, welcome to the show. Uh, WNEW 102.7 FM, HD3, welcome to the show. And WJPR down at 1640 AM Miami, Florida. Welcome to our show and uh, I hope, I hope you're gonna be interested in, in what I have to say tonight because it's very serious stuff. You know, I'm going to, by the way, you can call into the show, it's gonna be on the screen all night long today. Call into the show at 646-974-1580. Call in, ask any questions or go onto YouTube and ask me any question and if I can see, which is not so good sometimes. I'm going to uh, answer your questions or try to make comments to your uh, things. So our phone number again is, i-if he puts it on the screen, 646-974-1580, 646-974-1580. And you can of course always email justenoughhesey@gmail.com. But before I start the show, uh, Simcha Felder joined the race yesterday for the city council, which I've been uh, working and preparing and collecting funds for. I've been primed, I've been ready, I've been practicing, I've been ready to go against the city council, uh, updating my things. And Mr. Simcha Felder just got elected to the state senate. Just got elected, raised lots and lots of money and now, all of a sudden, he's switching. It's like musical chairs. He goes from one seat to the next, Kamala goes from one to the next. So Mr. Felder called my rabbi. I had a meeting, said, tell Hesey to drop out of the race to run for my senate seat. I won't endorse anybody. But what Simcha Felder tried to trick me stating that he doesn't understand that the Democrats replace him with another Democrat. Yeah, there'll be a special election, but everybody has to run as independent and only the Democrat guy gets to be put in right away. And what he also is trying to trick us, the Democrats just wanna take power. They just wanna abuse the system. And this is constantly wrong. And Mr. Felder does not belong in power. He's 69 years old. And I told him that, what you, what he told me was wrong, was illegal. And he didn't even call me, he called my rabbi. He, we were supposed to have a meeting or whatever. Anyways, Mr. Felder, I'm going against you. I'm gonna beat you. Remember when I predicted the presidential race? I'm gonna crush Mr. Felder. I want people to come out. I don't know what kind of uh, trickery he's gonna do. He already told my rabbi, he's gonna attack my signatures, accuse me of fraud. I didn't even start the election, he's already accusing me. Anyways, let's do a couple of ads quickly. We're gonna do uh, Green Line Building Solutions uh, and Compliance, that's my company. Uh, 718-871-0382, 718-871-0382. Uh, located at 202 Forster Avenue, Brooklyn, New York, 11230, parking in the back. We do violations, plans, permits, you know, there was a big fire uh, two days ago in Manhattan. And uh, it was from a batteries, you know, those lithium batteries and it had a fire and the whole building, 12 stories were vacated. And I went down yesterday, I dealt, the owner was scared he would be arrested. And I dealt with the police, the fire department, the building department, uh, all the marshals. And finally, after putting the building into compliance, we're gonna try to get the vacate lifted and all the people in the building are upset. And the, and the police were even letting the people pick up their batteries or pick up their, 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 their things. And everybody says the guy did something illegal by allowing this battery shop there. We told the battery people that they have to leave. We told them they can't use the batteries. Anyways, Hesey, so anyways, what happened was, I couldn't get them out because they don't let us evict you because these judges are whacked. And I'm gonna make changes. hesyteschler.com. I'm running for election. Join me, donate, hesyteschler.com. I'm so close. I wanna win this. You wanna see me in city council. You want the changes, whether you like me or not, put me there. Put me there because I'm the one that's gonna make the changes. I'm gonna be the one fighting for you. You know, the guy even, and one of the firemen says, oh, we don't like Hesey. When I walked into the building, they said, why? Says, he fights with us all the time. I fight with you because I don't let you take advantage of my people. As a politician, as your councilman, as your expediter, as your uh, uh, building compliance people, I make sure you're in compliance, but I don't let them screw you. hesyteschler.com, join me, donate, $10, $20. Anyways, my favorite guy, the State Exchange, Fine Jewelry, Rare and Estate Pieces, specializes in exchange of fine metals. He's located at 5303 12th Avenue, Brooklyn, New York. 5303 12th Avenue, Brooklyn, New York. 917-721-0119, 917-721-0119. And don't forget, you can call into the show at 646-974-1580. I want you to know something, that uh, I wanna say, I'm gonna start my quote and joke. Uh, but I wanna tell you something about President Trump. And this is very serious. You know, you gotta stop thinking that the people who support Trump are like Trump. That they speak like Trump or they act like Trump. They don't. They wanna hire Trump to do the dirty job. They want him to be the virus to the political corpius that, that want him to disrupt, to destroy, to demean those they disrespect and dislike. The system that they distrust and despise. They want someone to, 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 to what, what they believe had, what has believed, what has been done to them. And they cannot do themselves. That's why they don't care he exhibits terrible behavior. Because they are putting him in a terrible place. If you're sending someone into the jungle, do you really care if he's a savage? You see what I'm saying? And you have to understand it that way. You might not agree, you might not accept, you might not like it, but that's what it is. Trump is the one who's gonna change the swamp. I don't care if you don't like him, but he's gonna do what you don't wanna do. And that's my thing. And that's my quote. A man is not finished when he's defeated. He's finished when he quits. Mr. Trump never quit at Donald Trump. I'm never gonna quit. I'm gonna keep fighting. I don't care if they talk bad about me or the firemen don't like me or don't respect me. I know what to do is right. I know how to get you to the finish line. I know how to get that building open, you know? And I was screaming at them. I said, you know, we tried to, they said, oh, you got 17 violations. One of the news reporters came over to me. We didn't get it. The store got it. We told them when the law changed two years ago that they can't recharge their batteries in the store. They unscrewed it and they started recharging it. We couldn't stop them. We didn't know what was going in there. When we start eviction procedures, it takes eight, 10 months. When he caused the fire, the guy disappeared. And you wanna blame the owner? You wanna blame him? You wanna shut down the whole building? And they went through the building and they found these little things, even the mayor's guy came by today. You better get the street open because uh, uh, we wanna put up the tree. That's what he's busy with. He's not busy with safety or illegal occupancies. He's only busy with their stupidity. A man is never defeated. And he's not finished when he's defeated. He's finished when he quits. Hesey Tischler is not gonna quit. I'm gonna be councilman. I'm gonna win this race. Mr. Felder, he, you know, you know, Mr. Felder's problems are, I'm gonna tell you what his problems are, but I wanna tell you a funny joke. First, I wanna give a shout out to my beautiful granddaughter, Mira Navah and Leila Tamar, and my beautiful grandson, uh, 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 Yeshua. And my other grandson, Benjamin Hill, and my beautiful granddaughter, Hoover, who's crawling and running around all over the place. By the way, I had my 141th nephew this week, or last week, whatever, and the bris is supposed to be tomorrow, but I hear they're postponing it due to, it might be yellow. So whatever, uh, um, uh, I'm not, I might not go to the bris tomorrow morning. But again, my family's growing. We're never gonna be defeated. We're gonna keep fighting, me and Linda, we're gonna keep going, no matter what you say bad about me. You know, somebody said, oh, Hesey, you had lawsuits and your sister, I'm the one who takes care of my sister. Whatever you read in the papers is wrong or false. You know, this, these news reports, I've been doing good for the, for 40 years of my life. You wanna find some things that I fight the city and they wanna get me on? I'm gonna show you. I'm gonna show you about Cuomo. He deserves to go to jail, what he did. He knew, he actually committed medical malpractice. He belongs in jail. Here's my joke. Let's be, try to be happy. I'm sitting at dinner with my family and uh, uh, my middle son, Moish, he comes to the table and he says, "Oh no, not leftovers again," he complained. And uh, he saw the leftover meatloaf from the day before. So I said to him, listen to me, boy, and I said it very sternly. "Do you know how many people would love to have this delicious supper like this? You should be ashamed of yourself. Now, before we start eating, I wanna see you say a prayer and thank God for this meal." And he says his little prayer and he says, "Thank you, God, for this delicious supper again." He tried to be funny, you know, come on, that was funny. That was funny. Even I laughed at the table. I want you to know something. We need to get into that city council. Mr. Felder, you know, he doesn't help people when they come home from jail. I do. He doesn't wanna give people second chances. But you know, there's a guy in the senate, the head of the senate called Dean Skellos, he's going to jail now. All of a sudden, Mr. Felder is standing up for him. "Oh, he's a good guy, he did good." This man and his son threaten the other people. Says, "I'm gonna fire you all, I'm gonna make sure you're gonna do what I do. I run this state." Now, that's a man with corruption. Forget that he took on the side, whatever. And you're gonna try to let him go? You'd wanna put Trump in for $104,000 with this guy conned and, and used his power illegally. Abused his power in the state. Threatened other people that if you don't do it my way, you're gonna be fired or you're gonna be out or I'm gonna get you. And all of a sudden, Simcha Felder has a history and he told me specifically. "You go to jail, I can't help you. I won't write a letter for you. I won't give you a good conduct letter." These are people from his community. People come home, they need a second chance, they need a place where to go. Mr. Felder does not care. Doesn't help you fill out paperwork, doesn't help you get jobs, doesn't find your place to live. These are the things that us locals do all the time. One-third of my boxes go to people that come home from jail that have nowhere to go or their families can't eat. And you know what Mr. Felder is? He's, he, he has medical issues. But here's the problem, if you wanted to run for city council, no problem. Why would you spend all that money? Spend it on, on a state election and then a, a month later, run for, for city council? He has to be able to do something wrong. There's no way he's gonna qualify. And then telling me not to run. He thinks he's gonna run unopposed. Again, just like Kamala Jaeger. We've gotta get rid of these musical chair politicians. They don't do anything. You guys must wake up. Do you want somebody there that's gonna make a change or do you want somebody that's just been doing the same thing? Yes, Mr. Trump, President Trump is a savage. You don't like what he does. I happen to like him because he does so much good. You people don't even know what he does behind the scenes. Cause you don't like the way he talks? Where do you see a politician that waves to you and talks to you, to the blue collar workers, to the guys on the street, to the people in the apartments? He's just that, a fancy guy up in his office and I do the same thing. I mean, tonight after the show, I'm gonna go to another wedding. My campaign manager says, "Oh, Hesey, you go to weddings and things, that's not the way you do it." Sure you do it, you're part of your community. You have to be part of your community, you have to be part of the people. I see workers sometimes on the streets struggling. I said, "Come to my office, use the bathroom all day long." I didn't offer them much. Maybe have an extra bottle of water, take it. And they're so appreciative of the little things. You have to look out for your neighbors. I'm not preaching to any of you, don't get me wrong. Do what you gotta do. I'm not telling you how to live your lives. But if you do something that you can't do and you're sending, send the right person. Don't send these idiots back. Mr. Felder made us wear masks. He did not help us when they came into our stores to arrest us. I wanna tell you, very interesting right now, Mr. Cuomo. Okay, I'm calling him, my ex-Como, Cuomo. Ex-Andrew Cuomo committed medical malpractice. And publicly, and publicly undercounted the total number of COVID-related nursing home deaths. During the worst period of the killer pandemic. Now, I'm not saying that COVID was real, but when you have people in there and you know, the, the workers don't wanna show up and they're understaffed. So they, they don't even take care of them, they didn't give them any medicines. Of course, when these older people got sick or needed to be taken care of, they died. And the final investigating report released by the key house panel found that, and the report is from the Republican-led House Select Committee on the Corona, on the coronavirus, released Monday, also concluded that Cuomo likely gave false statements about his role in the, in the pandemic decision-making. He lied. He always lies. That's who Cuomo is. And you guys even are considering him for him to be a mayor again? This man belongs in jail, let alone not get $5 million for a fake book. You know, Scott Jennings, uh, uh, said that, you know, he doesn't wanna hear any more bull, bull about President Trump. You know, the inflation is trans, uh, is transition, is trans history, whatever. Afghanistan is a success. The border is secure. You know, the videos are cheap fakes. Biden is, 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 he dropped out of the race because he was sick. He said he'll never pardon Hunter Biden. It's all a lie. Even his nephew or whatever, uh, Pelosi's nephew. Uh, Gavin Newsom said that he can't believe that, 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 that Biden lied. So I got you, 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 you pardon Biden. So then pardon Trump. Let's make peace. Let's get this over with. Hunter Biden did stuff that his own father in 1994, uh, uh, led a crime bill and put millions of people in jail for exactly what Hunter Biden did. And he pardoned him, he didn't just pardon him, gave him a pardon, free pardon of anything that they can find on him for 10 years. So you know that Mr. Biden knew straight out that, that this was politically motivated what they went after Trump. They knew it. We all knew it. You know, this guy Jerry Nadler is a very powerful man. He wants to be, uh, he is. Uh, who knows how many years he's there in Congress, like 20-something years, but he's on this very powerful, um, um, he's a ranking member on the powerful House Judiciary Committee, which he's the one who got President Trump impeached twice. He's 77 years old. He wants to be again in this position. Now, do, do we want somebody like that that will turn into a, a, a President Biden and lose his brain? So his best friend, his best friend is running for that position. He finally dropped out. And now he's endorsing his friend who wanted to run against him, uh, Mr. Raskin. The problem is the seat that Mr. Raskin is on, his second-in-command is AOC. And God forbid, AOC is gonna take over, uh, uh, head of a committee. This is an idiot person. This is how we play the musical chairs. We've gotta put people in power. You know, Pete Heseteg, whatever his name is, 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 um, chosen to be the head of the defense. And now they're finding from 2017, he was drunk. And he was, he, he sexually harassed somebody. You know these are not true. He says it himself, they're going after him. And he's telling you, it's not true. And you're investigating, all of a sudden, this guy had a perfect record. We all loved him. You seen him on television, you'd never seen any of this. All of a sudden, some people are coming up with stories. Here's a guy who was shot at. He was in the field. That's the guy we need. Not some stupid guy who's never done anything or a paper pusher. We're just trying to cause Trump problems. And he's smarter, he's quicker, he's better. And he's a savage who's in the jungle and he's gonna beat them. He's gonna beat them. And no, he's not going after them. Even Fannie Willis, she lied. She was working with, uh, 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 she was working with the, with the DOJ. She was working, she, they told her, you have to turn over all your materials. She says, "I wasn't properly served." Really? That's what a prosecutor says, "I'm not properly served?" You, you have to turn over your stuff. You have to show us what you were, what you were trying to incriminate the president. That's my point. Daniel Penny, who is, uh, uh, they wanna try to get him on, on some stupid, uh, what is it again? They wanna get him on, on two different counts. I think negligent homicide and uh, I don't even know what the other one is. They wanna get him on two things that he can serve 30 years in jail. 30 years in jail. Oh, here it is. Negligent homicide and manslaughter. Jordan Neely got on the train. I'm gonna repeat it to you again. "I don't care to die," he says. "I don't care if somebody dies tonight, I'm gonna hurt somebody." I mean, a guy comes over to me and says that to me, "I'm gonna protect myself." He comes too close, I'm gonna push him away or jump on him. He was threatening people on the train. We withheld him. One medical examiner, this government's medical examiner, which is a setup, said, "Oh, he died from asphyxiation." Now, the man had synthetic drugs, full of drugs, plus he was psychosis. He has a long criminal history record of doing bad things. And all of a sudden, you're willing to blame somebody who tried to defend everybody on the train? Nobody's gonna defend anybody. And somebody else will get hurt, like today. Somebody was shot. They're saying crime is down again. Every week, crime is down. The way they keep saying that crime is down, there's no more crime in New York City. Rapes are up by 10%. Petty larceny is up. In Long Island, they made a law that you can't wear masks anymore. Can't wear masks because we wanna identify you. We need that same rule. No masks are allowed to be worn in New York City. You're right, if you're sick or you're old in a wheelchair in the hospital. You're walking around the street, you can't be wearing a mask. We wanna be able to identify if you commit a crime. You're all nervous about the mass deportation. We're not mass deporting. We're mass deporting, even though this is a sanctuary city, we're deporting people who've committed violent crimes. Yes, the mayor and the city council are trying to work something out with the sanctuary city that if somebody has done some crimes, they're trying to figure it out that the little crimes are not so bad. You're right, something stupid. Or driving, or maybe they took something off a shelf or when they were hungry. I don't feel that we should deport, it's a very complicated thing. And I know one thing. President Trump is going to shut those borders on day one. Thank God. We can't, we just can't do this anymore. The, the migrants are protesting that we took away their, their, their food cards. Some of us don't, you know, this week I had a hard week. I had to pay a lot of extra bills, tried to cover my credit cards, had their wedding, the taxes came in, my taxes came in. My, you know, for my property taxes, I had to pay the water bill, I had to pay the electric bill, everything went up. And I barely made it to the end of the week. And me and Linda are going to have to go and, and cut our budget a little bit, tighten our belts. And we're doing pretty good compared to so many others. Just imagine all those others. But these guys are taking 54 to 100 million dollars out of the city budget. Plus, you're talking, they're saying over 11 billion dollars that's gonna be, that was taken already and over the next two years to house and take care of the migrants. We're not solving the problem by just, you know, they say, uh, um, uh, give a man a fish, you'll feed him for the day. Teach him how to fish. You'll be able to feed him forever. You know, we, we're just supporting the migrants, we're not really showing them, we're not really giving them jobs. You're trying to take away jobs from New Yorkers and give them jobs. Find them places to live, make them build the places, put them into places, but you're not doing it by making them sit there, by giving them the money. We have gang members that are robbing and killing and raping and shooting and they're laughing at us. We're videotaping them. I had a guy who videotaped gang members selling drugs on the street corner and they're threatening back. In El Salvador, they took 10,000 cops and they went after gang members. Why don't we do the same thing over here? Shut these gang members down from selling the drugs, from robbing and raping and breaking into our houses. In Mr. Felder's neighborhood, they're protesting the Palestinians, threatening us. Not in my neighborhood. But Mr. Felder is running again for office. Mr. Felder's great fame that he, that he, that he stopped plastic bags and he's charging us 5 cents. Mr. Felder did not cut the budget. They allowed, uh, uh, your, uh, uh, allowed Governor Hokel for congestion pricing when he was councilman 12 years ago or something. He was, he allowed them to start the congestion pricing idea. He didn't stop it, he was in the state now. He could have stopped it there. He has done nothing. 650 new cameras, I know they're being placed around the city. They should be placed around the state. Mr. Felder did not stop it and it's a state thing. The state gets, uh, uh, 25%, 50% goes to the contractor. And it constantly, constantly, we all, we're just lost. We're just lost. And we're gonna actually try to even let him run against me. The mayor is now all of a sudden friends with Mr. Trump, talking nice about him. You're right, I believe the mayor, the mayor should be pardoned because you're, you're holding up the city on some stupid fake, uh, uh, I don't believe the thing for a moment that he took bribes or he got a train or a plane ticket or, or a hotel room upgrade. That's what you're giving him, all these federal things. President Trump, please pardon him so we can run the city. He's not quitting. He didn't really do anything wrong. He didn't take money, you don't see envelopes. Yeah, he helped the Turkish government get their building approved. You know how long it takes the building department to do anything? And all of a sudden, the city of Yes Now is changing the zoning laws. We can start building bigger buildings. What do you mean build, building, your buildings? Why are you not building more housing? Why isn't a guy like me in my neighborhood allowed to build down to his house? And you know how long it takes the building department to approve anything? So even with your Yes City and the zoning law changes, it's gonna take forever. I would like to be there and make new laws and show them how to make things quicker. That if an examiner takes more than two months on a set of plans, fired! And if a judge starts, keeps evictions for more than three months on her desk, fired or suspended. That fire that happened yesterday in that building is the blaming of the city itself. They told him to stop bringing and, and recharging the batteries in the place. And he continued to do something, there's nothing you can do about it, it's his place. We tried to tell him to leave. We tried to make him go away. He knew he was doing wrong. He was unscrewing the, the, the electricity in the place and making fake outlets. It was going to happen a fire and, and it was warned 17 times by the fire department. All they know is how to punish the landlord. The landlord can't even evict him if he wanted to. The landlord can't even evict him if he wanted to. Today, I had the Census Bureau call me. One of the units that I had, the tenant moved out, very nice tenant. And I found another tenant with a lease. Somebody complained, the apartment is vacant. The young man who rented the apartment got married. And he wasn't married, so he didn't move into the apartment for two weeks. Then he got married and he went on a honeymoon. They want to know why the apartment is vacant. It's not your business. I have a lease, I rented it out. And why are you only checking that one apartment? Why don't you call everybody else in the building? Why? Because you want to try to make me rent it to one of your special needs or low income people? I've done that. They want to force you, they want to control you, they want to control your buildings. Why don't you run after the New York City Housing Authority that has 100,000 apartments open? That are flooded, that are filthy, that are moldy, that are dangerous? That's the place where you have to be. But you're too busy. We need somebody in this city to take over New York City Housing Authority. But of course, it's a federally, it's a state or federal run operation. So we can't even be in charge of them. Mr. Felder does not belong in city council. I don't know, you know, he's trying to help his rich landlords. The landlords that don't have to pay broker fees because they have their own in-house brokers. I like brokers. I believe brokers should be paid a fee by the tenant. Some of these tenants have nowhere to go, can't find a place. Or when they look in the papers, they're not qualified. These brokers teach them how to fill out the paperwork, how to get approved, how to raise the money, how to get into an apartment, and they help the landlord get it. For that, you have to pay a fee. You have to pay a fee. They're making it illegal for a broker to pay a fee. So a lot of these people who don't know how to fill out their apartments were gonna be homeless. Just change laws to screw the little guy, but the big landlords get away with it. And that's who Mr. Felder supports. I don't mind helping big landlords. I help them all the time. But don't let them abuse the system. I want them to make money. I want them to make a profit. I hope the landlord this week get back his building. I made sure he had a profit in the building. I made sure his building was perfect, well-run. Anyways, my special election should be called January 1st to January 2nd by the mayor. And our election is on February 25th or the first day of March. And it's very politically themed. Mr. Felder played the game very well. And he's gonna try to raise money. And I know he's not gonna be able to qualify in time. But he's gonna get like 92 contributors at $500 a pop. And wait, who has $500? I'm trying to get $10, $20, $175. And to qualify was very complicated. I don't know he's gonna do it. I told you about the crime. I told you how bad crime is. And you think I'm joking. There are ladies in Harlem, there's ladies in Midtown Manhattan complaining they can't walk on the street. Shooting's in the subway openly. And cops are busy pulling over a lady and blocking the street. That's what they're busy with. And I understand that they cut red lights seriously, but if he makes a right turn and the light just turned red, that's what this guy was busy with. In the middle of the night and blocking traffic. You're interfering with my investigation. What investigation? You're blocking traffic. I don't have to wait for you. And he parked sideways and crooked, pull over like a normal person. Tell them to drive down the block. Mr. Penny, I hope you found innocent. I don't know why their jury is taking two days. You know, they even asked for video to come back from the officers who interviewed him. People on the train are telling you they were fair for their life, that Mr. Penny did good, and they're trying to find something. What are you finding? There are people standing outside the courtroom screaming guilty, guilty, guilty. Guilty about what? He didn't maliciously go kill him? This guy was acting crazy. How many times have you seen people acting crazy and we hold them down? Or in the mental hospitals, the guy is freaking out and throwing things, so they put a thing on him and the people hold him down? This guy was full of drugs. Full of drugs. Criminal. Threatened to kill people. In Seoul, Korea this week, I'm gonna go into international stage because I want to get to Israel. The president out of the blue of Seoul, Korea, said we're gonna do martial law. He feels there were some people and the government said no. The government went 199 to 0 and overrode him on martial law and still he controlled the army and tried to abuse it. Mr. Trump did not do that. Mr. Trump, when he was president on January 6th, could have done that. Didn't do that. Didn't proclaim martial law. And in Seoul, Korea, the government overrode it, and the people fought back. The people screamed and hollered. We have to holler and scream just like in Seoul, Korea. We cannot allow the government. Their job is to maintain our budgets, to give us a better quality of life, not to control our life every moment. Benny, by the way, Benny, welcome to the show. And Benny, I'm gonna bring a good bottle of liquor. Benny didn't show up last week, so I didn't bring the liquor. Benny likes to drink. He's not an alcoholic. I do not say I called you an alcoholic, Benny, because I know you're gonna scream at me after saying, oh, hey, you called me an alcoholic. He likes to drink. He's a good man. I like when he's a little drunk. President Trump, they want to, in New York City, to postpone his sentencing. I mean, come on, the man is running the country. He's gonna be 82 years old. You want to sentence him in 2029 to jail, an 82-year-old man for $104,000? When the Supreme Court said that he's immune? You're just looking, they're wasting our money and our time. Come on, let's get it over with. Let's run the country. What, you waiting for four years from now to punish somebody? We need to have four good years. Now is the time. The economy is great. We told, President Trump already told Trudeau from Canada, you can't just make $100 million or $100 billion on us? You want to be our 51st state? We're gonna tariff you. We're gonna make money on you. So now in Israel, they're going after Netanyahu. He's in a war, he's doing great. He's really doing great. Finally, they made some kind of a ceasefire with Hezbollah. And they're there. You see, but they see they have weapons and they're still breaking the truth. So the Israelis are trying to do it. I'm hoping the ceasefire lasts so that people can go home. But the same idea in Gaza. These guys, we just found another hostage dead. They're not giving it back because they can't make a deal. We should go in there and question them. You know what President Trump said? You better give us back those hostages before I become president, or you're gonna get it. Oh, I'm so excited. I don't know what Mr. Trump is gonna do. I don't know what the president's gonna do, but I know he's gonna do something. He's gonna support Israel. I can't wait to see those hostages back. That's it, that would make my year. That would make my life better to see just those people free. I don't care about anything else. I don't care if the ICC wants to arrest the whole world. And even then, they're crooks. We cannot take a president, even in Israel, during a wartime and make him show up for a trial. The man is in the middle of a war. The man is saving the country. You know that. But the leftists, even in the United States, the democratic left is thinking and thinking, oh, how we lost? Why we lost? Because you idiots. You've affected us in a terrible way. You made our lives miserable. And and I just want you to know, I'm gonna go back to the Biden sweeping pardons. When President Trump gets into office, I can't wait till he pardons everybody on the January 6th thing. Just right across the board, you will see joy in America. You will see millions and millions of people just shouting at the top of their lungs, thank you, Mr. President, for doing the impossible. And you know what, Mr. Trump? I'm so happy that you've already started leading the world stage. I'm so happy. You know, there was a Brooklyn guy killed this week, a waiter, just from a crossfire over a bill. A man shot by his hotel room. Rapists. I mean, it's just, they just keep lying. People can do whatever they want here in this town, and they get away with it, and they get out of jail in 1, 2, 3. All I know is when the president said that his first priority for the Trump administration will be the release of the hostages, and he wants no further delay, I'm happy. By the way, it doesn't get better than this. Never, never, this is what Scott Jennings, never again do you want to hear that Trump's a liar. You can't believe anything he says people say. Trump will abuse his power. Trump will only use the system to benefit himself and his family. Never, ever again. Biden is leaving office making the strongest possible case for Donald Trump. You know that? Our government, our justice system is a buy and for the elites and nobody else, Trump is gonna stop that. Biden ran to banish Trumpism from the political system. And he has left Trumpism politically and now institutionally the strongest possible political force in this country. It is a, what Biden did was a complete and utter failure. And I want to tell you something about COVID, because we're running a little bit out of time. Here's the House that released their 500-page report on COVID-19. Even one of the congressmen was screaming, he says, he was on a plane. How abusive these people on the plane said, if the mask falls below your five-year-old's nose, I'm gonna banish you from the airlines. They had so much power, a stewardess, a steward had so much power. These guys gave these animals power when he's supposed to be serving us and taking care of us. COVID-19 was fake. And why people died was because of the abuse and the negligence. And the people in power need to be punished. And I was right about that as well. COVID-19 likely originated from a laboratory in Wuhan. It was linked to gain-of-function research funded with US taxpayer dollars. Do you understand that? They actually know the truth. They actually know what happened here, and nobody's doing anything about it. We're screaming a little bit, big deal. $200 billion in relief funds were lost to fraud with criminals exploiting the weak oversight. $200 billion. A quarter of a trillion dollars that we needed for our people. Our whole budget, if the New York State's $200 billion. We could have lived New York City even with the over-budget and overspending two years. And we threw it all away in a couple of months. Prolonged lockdowns and arbitrary mandates caused severe harm, not only through economic devastation, mental health crisis, historic learning loss while lacking robust scientific support. There was no scientific support to this. And somehow, we let them get away with it. I know I'm going backwards to COVID. I'm trying to tell you is, we've got to learn. There's a new president. President Trump is a new president. He knows what's going on. I know what's going on. We all know what's going on. Let's not sit idly by. Let's not keep re-electing. Let's wipe out the whole city council. Let's put new people in, not idiots. And that's what President Trump is doing. He's not putting in the old politicians. He's putting in new blood, change of blood, people that actually want to make change, that will change the system, that believe in doing the right thing. They're not fanatics. They're conservatives. They don't lean too much to the right, they don't lean too much to the left. But you're right, the left is so crazy that they've gotta push a little bit more to the right. The policies ignored natural immunity, pushing mandates that eroded trust and harmed public perception of science. I'm embarrassed to tell you that Linda, I took the, I don't know, the, what was that shot with the M? I forgot what it was. Who cares what it was? Linda actually went without my permission, and not that she needs my permission. And she took the Johnson and Johnson shot, which I told her was dangerous. And she got a little crazy from it. It affected her. It affected her body. She got very sick from it. And many people got very, very sick from it. That was the most terrible time what we did in the city. We practiced, we experimented on our people and our children. I don't even want to tell you that thousands of stories that I've heard, but who knows how much more that we don't even know about? WHO and the CDC compromised by political interference, offering inconsistent, unscientific guidance that fueled public-related incidents. I don't know. And if COVID was able to happen and shut down this country, and Bill Gates has to go to jail. People are screaming in England when they see him that he's a murderer and a killer. We need to get rid of idiots like this. George Soros, Bill Gates, but they got billions of dollars. They can protect themselves. We need not to listen to them. Yeah, they made their money. They're not heroes, they didn't do anything great. Yeah, they give a lot of charity. That's what you gotta be, be a philanthropist, give charity, do good, make your money. I'm not jealous that you're a billionaire and trillionaire, good for you. But don't impose your ideas on us. We're all fathers, we're all just like you. We're men, we're all gonna die, we're all gonna raise our children, we're all humans, we're all made out of flesh and blood. We all have our sicknesses, except George Soros keeps living with different women, who is in the 20s and 30s, is an 80-something-year-old man. And Bill Gates, who we all thought was all the good, great, godly man, cheated on his wife with many women. The House of Representatives, by the way, I want to talk about Fannie Willis again. Georgia judge ordered Fulton County District Attorney Fannie Willis to turn over to the conservative watch group any communications that she had with Special Counsel Jack Smith or now disbanded House January 6th Committee. And she says she didn't meet with them. And then on Monday, the Fulton County Superior Judge ordered Willis to turn over any records, saying she violated the law by failing to properly respond to the Dugistle Watch's suit. Willis claimed she was not properly served. What does that mean? What does that mean, you're not properly served? You knew you had to serve. You're a prosecutor. You don't have to be properly served, you have to do the right thing. Turn over the documents. What do you mean properly served? Cooperate. If anything, you don't have to be served, you have to cooperate freely. They have too much power. Too much power. Here's the one thing that I'm so proud of. On day one, President Trump is gonna close those borders. Close them! Nobody's coming in anymore, and they're rushing. They're rushing to the border, and Biden's letting them in left and right. And I know Tom Holmes is gonna do a great job as borders are. I don't want him to abuse his power. I don't want people to get in trouble. I don't want him to split families. I want them to be compassionate, but I don't know what to do. I know we can bring in people, but you can't bring the whole world into America right now. Bring them in slowly. Transition them. People have waited years to get their green card. I know one of my relative sister married somebody from Venezuela. And for five years, they've been working on the green card, going back and forth and following the rules. And if anything he does wrong, he can lose his green light privileges. But these guys are getting privileges. They could work here while those people are struggling, they can't make a living because they can't work over here. And we just keep abusing the system, and nobody stops the system. There's a system for a reason. And when the left or the Democrats, I'm ashamed to tell you that I was a Democrat for many years. And the Democrats think that they can politicize abusive power in New York City. I've gotta stop it. I'm going to be the one to stop it. People tell me on X and Twitter, oh, hey, she's bad, he's crazy. Really? You really believe that for a moment? To do something else, put somebody else up. Mr. Felder's not qualified. He's been there for 25 years. He was a city councilman. He was the, he was a state senator. He had other positions, working for councilmen, working for other politicians. And what did he accomplish? What is his record? What is his fame? That he switched sides in the middle to help the Republicans. So now the Republicans are gonna give him a nomination because he helped them once or twice. He doesn't bring any money. I want to tell you, he spent $280,000 on an event. He got $280,000 for an event, and I'm so happy for that event. I spoke to the distributor, and I told you about it, it costed $100,000. Where's the other $180,000? So when we were looking over, they didn't show us all the thing. They gave the money to an organization called the BPJCC, the Borough Park Jewish Community Center. They gave the money to an organization called the BPJCC, the Barre Park Jewish Community Center. And I asked them, "Where's the money?" Some young guy who's now the new president, they put in as a fake guy, Mr. Titlebaum. He says, "Well, we had salaries and we had to set it up, it took a month. But your organization exists, and you get money from the government to exist, you don't need more salaries. You're trying to help the community, you're creating an event, you're supposed to work overtime hours." And this is what they do. They abuse his power, but for me to get a special needs kid's money, five years? The Board of Education is just a bunch of idiots from top to the bottom, should be disbanded and start over again. I don't know what to tell you. Go ahead, scream about Trump. Whoopi Goldberg and The View, they keep screaming about Trump, 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 Trump. What have they done to make society better? What have they done to make New York City better? There's many good cops out there. But a lot of them just want to move up the system. I know guys that want to be promoted to chief and super inspector chief. That's their whole life, to be promoted and make more money. You don't see them going out there every day protecting us. You don't see them, you see them being more political. Those police officers shouldn't be political. They should be out there on the streets. We should cut our budgets, we should cut our manpower. I mean, 400,000 city workers, I don't even want to tell you the millions across the country. How much money we're throwing away when we don't need to? Duplicity and getting things done. Do you know what it is that I call, somebody tells me at the building department, "You got to call this number." And I said, "I've been calling the number to try to help these people for three days." Finally, finally, I get through, they put me on hold and transferred me to a chief. Boom voicemail. Do you think I got a call back? I had to sit on the phone and dial again for two days straight till I got somebody to pick up. How does somebody not pick up a government phone? If my phones don't pick up for like an hour because somebody's taking lunch, people freak out. They have my cell number, they have our private number, they have our email. We have all of that for them, and we don't get responses sometimes for two or three months. The abuse in this city, the abuse in this country to get anything done. I'm trying to help people now and start an organization that will just show people how to fill out forms so they can get all that money that's sitting there, that these lazy government officials, which you have to go through red tape to get funding for your rent, to get funding for your food stamps. It's sitting there, but instead of giving it to the people who live here and need it, you're giving it to the migrants, you're giving it to illegals. We, the people, need it, but we can't because our forms are not filled out. Our people like Mr. Felder are too busy helping us not, that's why he has an office there. That's why Mr. Yager has an office there. And now we promoted Mr. Yager to assembly, who did nothing, who cheated on his wife. Not that, again, I have a problem, people do cheat on their wife, not me. These are people that we want in power, people that have no respect for themselves or their family. And these are the people that are leading the way. AOC is a wacko. We can't put her in any power. I don't know why she's still in office. Anyways, my dear friends, this is what I've been shouting out. This is the changes we need. And I'm proud to be an American. I'm proud that the holidays, I had a great Thanksgiving. I'm proud to be an American. I'm proud that I spent time with my family on Thanksgiving. I'm so proud that this country does great things for us. You know, they said, and I believe this is smart, every year we buy a tree for Rockefeller Center, $100,000, $200,000, and this tree, and the tree lighting. Why don't we just plant a tree over there? Keep it forever. Take care of it. We have parks, we have trees being planted by everybody's house, it's a commandment. If you renovate your house and file an alteration type one, you have to pay for a tree, $1,800, $3,000, the city plants it. Why can't we plant a big tree in Rockefeller Center? Let it grow forever. Trim it, take it, cut it, change it. Why do we, and we can relight it every year, it'll be pretty. Why bring the tree, drag the tree, spend all that money? All that money could be used to fix the tree and do other stuff. Again, stupidity, waste of money, waste of time, waste of manpower. And abuse of the system. Again, I'm going to give you my idea. We need to take all these government agencies and combine them. There's so many ways to save billions. I'm not talking millions, I'm talking billions and billions of dollars. If we could just cut our workforce in half, we can cut down about a billion dollars. Combine agencies, save another $4 billion. Use the money for cops, since we don't have enough cops according to you. But we do have enough money for cops. And the cops are still not doing their thing, they're busy ticketing and running. But you have all these cameras. So if you have all these cameras, why do you need cops to do red light tickets? Why do you need cops for speeding? Remember, a speeding ticket's not like you're going 60, 70, you're going 5 miles, 4 miles, 7 miles over the limit. Really? Really, that's the ticket you give? Because the congestion for me to drive down a couple of blocks on Avenue Block is so complicated, that even if I speed one block so I can catch the next light? Put lights, put stop signs. Most people follow those rules. But you have cops hiding in corners, cops with their little radar guns, that's what you're busy with? And we have ways. Anybody with brains today can see where the cops are and know where the cops are, we report on it. Of course, every once in a while, we get caught or they make stuff up, like tonight. I couldn't believe this cop pulled this lady over with two kids in the car because she made a right turn on the red light so she could make the light. That's what he was busy with. He should be out there protecting and running around. And I screamed at him, I wasn't scared of him. I want to say goodbye to our friends at WSNR, WNEW, and WJPR in by Florida. Thank you for joining the show. I know it's time, usually you guys leave a few minutes before. And I'm going to do a couple of quick commercials quickly before we end our airtime. So don't get off here, because I do have closing comments. And I do want to tell you about Green Line Building Solutions and Compliance, located at 718-871, I mean, our phone number, 718-871-0382. We help people, we give advice, don't be nervous. Like today, I had a bunch of people calling me for advice. "Heshi, can you do this, can you do that?" And I went to three other people, I said, "You went to other people." Now, usually I would pay you for consultation, but you've already been consulted, you know what's going on. And I reviewed it with him, and I told him what to do. So we gave him advice, we showed him what to do, and we told him you can go somewhere else and tell them what to do. 718-871-0382. Green Line Building Compliance, located at 202 Foster Avenue, Brooklyn, New York, 11230. And we have parking in the back. And of course, heshitishla.com. Don't forget, heshitishla.com. I need your donations, and you've been doing great, people. You're doing great. I'm there, I'm there, I'm at the finish line. I'm at the finish line. Come on, guys, get me in. I promise you, you get me in, I know that you've heard these promises so many times. Get me in, I want you to come. The mayor's going to call my election on January 1st. I'm going to need volunteers for 12 days to go out and get signatures. And then on March 1st, I'm going to need you to come and get me signatures again. That's it! Get me on the ballot, because this Mr. Felder is going to accuse me of doing false and forged stuff. That's what he's going to do. He's going to try to make me waste my money, so I don't want 500 signatures, I want 3,000 signatures. It's not hard. But I need an army, I need a force of volunteers. I want to beat Mr. Felder so badly. I really, really want it. heshitishla.com. Check my website out, I'm working on it, I'm making it better. They're trying to make me look skinny on my pictures. And then don't forget the Estate Exchange, fine jewelry, rare estate pieces, specialist in exchange of fine materials and metals. He's located at 5303 12th Avenue, Brooklyn, New York, The new year is coming. The Christmas season is here. I know you have to buy presents, I know some of you are tight for money. I know you're going to have to buckle the belt. You don't have to buy the fancy things, and I'm talking about myself now. And I tell it to my family with Hanukkah and stuff like that. You know, sometimes just a box of chocolates is so nice. A bottle of wine for $10 is so nice. You don't have to go out and buy these fancy ties or gifts or blankets. Yes, if you can afford it, do whatever you want to do, nobody's stopping you. But you don't have to, you know, for your wife, you should buy something nice, a piece of jewelry. I bought it already, Linda, this year, and I don't have the money to buy her something else for Hanukkah. I'm going to take Linda out to a nice dinner. You know, me and Linda, today, we were hanging out all day today, and she was giving me a hard time. And I said, "Linda, I'm going to buy you a dinner." And she's, "Really, Heshi, where are you taking me?" And I took her out for a hamburger and french fries. I bought three hamburgers, two french fries. I won't even tell you, it costed me $77, the kosher stuff, okay? Thank God he gave me extra ketchup. So today, everything costs money, everything is expensive. Really, three hamburgers, kosher hamburgers with french fries, with all the toppings, $77. And we got some drinks with that, too. So, and Linda was happy with it. We were happy, we enjoyed it, we had a good laugh. And in the morning, I made her my juices, yes, you can still email me, and I'll give you my juice schedule. And I make her juice, I made her avocado sandwich this morning with onions and tomato on rye bread. I didn't toast the bread today because lately she didn't like the toast. So I gave her fresh bread, I went out in the morning and bought a fresh bread, and made her avocado, because I have this avocado that I buy when it's hard, and I let it, you know, ferment for a day or two. And I made her an avocado sandwich with onion and tomato. I was going to put a little salt and pepper, but I know she doesn't like it.